Apologize for your, for our delay. We were caught on another meeting. I need to do a roll call of all of the board members before we convene. Dr. Anderson. Ms. Cohen.
Here.
Ms. Darinac Kofax.
Here.
Mr. Frisch. Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Here.
Ms. Marin.
Here.
I'm going to go back to Mr. Frisch. Mr. Frisch, can you hear us?
Yes, my dog's going nuts. I was trying to spare everybody. I'm here.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Here.
Ms. Omage. Ms. Pekarski.
Here.
Ms. Sizemore-Hizer.
I'm here.
Ms. Tolan.
I'm here.
And I'm going to go back. Is Ms. Omage, has she joined us yet? Okay, well, we do have a quorum, so we're going to go ahead and proceed. In order to have a section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on May 12th, 2020, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Ms. Darinac Kofax, seconded by Dr. Anderson. All those in favor, please show your hands on the screen. I have Dr. Anderson, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Marin, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Tolan, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Pekarski, Ms. Sizemore-Hizer, Ms. Darinac Kofax, Ms. Omage, and Ms. Corbett Sanders. That's unanimous that motion carries. I now call on Dr. Anderson for a motion.
Thank you. I am so sorry. I'll be right there. I lost my motion.
How about if I read it? Oh, you've got it.
I have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I move to, I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who assaulted another student at school and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
And that motion is seconded by Ms. Cohen. All those in favor? That's Dr. Anderson, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Sizemore-Hizer, Ms. Omage, Ms. Marin, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Darinac Kofax, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Pekarski, and Ms. Corbett Sanders. That is unanimous the motion carries. I now will go to convening our public hearing. And with that, I am going to call on Ms. McLaughlin as the Chair of the Budget Committee to call on the individual speakers. We have, I guess, 18 tonight. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the public hearing for the fiscal year 21 budget. On behalf of the entire school board, I would like to thank you for taking time tonight to speak with us. We have 21 registered speakers. Each speaker is allotted three minutes, and we ask that you stay within the time limit. The timer will start when you begin to speak, and the timer will sound at the conclusion of your three minutes. When your name is called, please unmute your microphone and turn on your computer's video function and begin speaking. Please mute your microphone and turn off your video at the end of your three minutes. At this point, I will call on the first speaker, and we have Emily Vanderhoff. It will be followed by Tina Williams and then David Walred.
All right. Are you ready? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Corbett Sanders, Dr. Bray Bran, and members of the Board. My name is Emily Vanderhoff, and I'm a first grade teacher at Hunt Valley Elementary School in Springfield. I'm also a proud member of the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers, and I've worked for FCPS for eight years. I know that we're dealing with an extremely tight budget and that many of our priorities will have to go unfunded until the economy rebounds. I hope that the final budget that you decide on will ensure that every dollar that we spend will go directly towards addressing the most pressing needs of our students. The Board is well aware of the emotional strain this crisis is having on our students. Over the past two weeks, FCFT conducted a survey on mental health during distance learning. We received responses from 825 staff members. The overwhelming response is that we need additional staffing to support student mental health and social emotional well-being. 81% reported that our current staffing will fall short of meeting the increase in student mental health needs as a result of COVID-19. When asked which staffing position would best meet this need, the overwhelming response was school counselors. Truly, we need an increase in all student services position because they all play a crucial role in the success of our students and families. But counselors are in the position best equipped to meet students' social and emotional needs. My class is lucky to be supported by an amazing school counselor who's extremely dedicated. My students know how to talk about their emotions and empathize with others thanks to her weekly lessons. And she supports my students in social skills groups and lunch bunches and talks out conflicts with them. Unfortunately, even before the closure, she was struggling to meet with all students who needed her support. Our school is only funded by the county through a council ratio of 1 to 500, and although our principals use school funds to allow for our second counselor to be full-time, she's still responsible for 375 students and is constantly pulled in a million directions at once. We're already seeing students' mental health deteriorate as a result of the pandemic. And today, I found out that the first one of my students has lost a loved one to COVID. Our district will soon be overwhelmed with students who are personally affected by this virus. These students will need trained counseling staffs who can support them. Dr. Presidio made an important point yesterday when he said that social and emotional learning is foundational to everything we do academically with our students. When our students' social and emotional needs are not met, they are not ready to learn academics. And the burden to support all of our students' mental health cannot fall solely on the classroom teachers. I am encouraged to see the funding for school counselors, psychologists, and social workers in the suggested SEL funding presented at yesterday's work session. I hope that the Board chooses to fund these additions in the final budget. I'd also like to urge the Board to reallocate the funding proposed for elementary principal pay parity and all new central office positions. While I fully support these budget items, we're in an emergency. We must use all available funding to directly support student needs. I hope that our budget climate improves quickly so that we can reinstate these budget items. But for now, this money is better spent on school-based staffing, student services, and special education. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Vanderhoff. I now call on Tina Williams, followed by David Walred, and then Kara Jenkins. Ms. Williams, are you with us? I will go ahead and proceed with David Walred. Are you with us?
I am here.
Wonderful. Please proceed, Mr. Walred.
Good evening. My name is David Walred. I'm a math and special education teacher at Lake Reddick Secondary School. I've worked for Fairfax County for 10 years. I bought special education at both the elementary and secondary levels, and I've also been a classroom teacher for Level 4 students. I'm a doctoral student at George Mason University researching twice-exceptional students. Today, I'm, I'm speaking to urge the school board to adopt a budget that invests in our most vulnerable students. The Board can do this by continuing to increase mental health support and working to bridge the digital divide between students with adequate access to technology and those without. You're going to hear a lot about emotional support today, but I really want to speak to you today about academic support. Our special education population is being underserved right now. This is not the fault of teachers, it's not the fault of administrators, and it's not the fault of the district or this Board. Everybody is doing the best job that they're able to under these circumstances. However, our students are just not getting the level of academic support we know they need. Many IEP accommodations simply are not possible to administer through distance learning. Many of our students in our Category B classes require hand-over-hand practice of skills. Our Category A classes are filled with students who required, required daily repetition practice, not weekly. Our twice-exceptional population is not receiving the structured organization support they need to excel. To make a long story short, we need people. We need counselors, we need mental health professionals, but also, we need teachers and we need instructional assistants. We need to start the fall ready to make up for what our students are losing right now. We need to be ready to provide directed, targeted interventions to students. I ask the Board to please save increases to central office staff for another year. Let this year be focused on school-based positions. We know that our children will be coming back with academic, social, and emotional needs we have never seen before. Let us be prepared to meet them with the most direct support that we can offer them. Let this year be about directly investing in the future for our children. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Walred. I now have Kara Jenkins, followed by Lenny Wolf. Are you with us, Kara?
I'm here. Hi.
Great. Welcome.
Thank you. So hello, my name is Kara Jenkins, and I am President of Fairfax County Council PTA. While these last two months have been challenging, I would like to reassure you that SCCPTA remains committed to balancing our positive partnerships within FCPS while still laser-focused on our mission to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. In that same spirit of advocacy, at the end of April, SCCPTA distributed a brief return to learn survey. While admittedly, we were unable to reach every FCPS community member, we received more than 8,200 responses within 48 hours. And those responses guide my remarks today. We urge you to approve a budget that prioritizes distance learning, mental health, and communication. We believe that SCPS should prepare a robust distance learning plan to encompass the entire academic year. Even when we return to school buildings, we still need to consider families with immune-compromised members as well as parents who simply may be too fearful until a vaccine is widely distributed. Therefore, we urge you to ensure that all students, preschool and up, have the necessary tools like laptops and internet access to participate in distance learning. In addition to technology access, we also need to consider student mental health. Our survey responses indicate that we should expect students to exhibit an increase in mental health distress. We urge you to consider the resources and delivery of mental health services. We ask that you continue to increase the number of school counselors and to think creatively about how they can connect with students to include individual check-ins as well as mental health curriculum. And finally, the simple fact that SCCPTA received 8,200 responses in 48 hours speaks volumes. Our community, parents, teachers, students, they are screaming to be heard. They are asking to be part of the solution to our shared crisis, and they are demanding that SCPS prioritize a deeper investment in communications, specifically in consistency and timeliness of information. Furthermore, we are concerned about distance learning and mental health information being communicated to families in languages and formats that they do not understand. Please hire additional staff to make all information available in the top languages spoken by our families. Thank you for your time and your deliberations on this extremely challenging budget, and we look forward to working with you.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Jenkins. I now, I'm aware that Speaker number two, Tina Williams, has joined us, so I will ask Ms. Williams if you are ready to speak.
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Okay. We'll proceed with Tina Williams, and then we will continue with number five, Lenny Wolf.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Tina Williams, President of Fairfax County Federation of Teachers, which represents thousands of professional educators. My members are working nonstop to serve our community, and we know school closures will deepen inequities that already existed. Our schools are already understaffed, and it will take more resources, not less, to recover from COVID-19. We stand united with stakeholders that represent public health, faith, labor, and economic interests to urge our school board to adopt a budget that directly serves students and staff. One, keep all employees whole. This means retaining all staff, making sure employees who plan to retire can do so as scheduled, and reinstating expected MSA and staff increases right away. Our educators are counting on established pay systems to support their families. To suspend them damages employee morale, well-being, and retirement. We have serious concerns that the budget proposal to raise elementary principal pay while proposing to freeze the pay of nearly all other staff is included. Budgets reflect values. The proposed budget demonstrates that FCC values administration over frontline staff that directly serve and support students. Two, increase mental health support for students and staff. We just released a survey that found staff believe school counselors have the highest positive direct impact on student mental health and social emotional needs. We support the proposal to use COVID-19 relief funds to hire additional school counselors, psychologists, and social workers, but we should hire more. We urge the Board to reallocate proposed funds to increase principal pay and hiring of new executive principals to instead hire new school counselors that will most directly provide the necessary support for students and staff. Third, increase support for our most vulnerable student populations. All proposed new central office staff hires should be reallocated to hire school-based staff that will directly serve our special education and English-language learner students. We must do more to support our students with significant needs. Fourth, eliminate the digital divide for students and staff so that all have computers, Wi-Fi, and the interpretation and translation services they need. The bottom line is that our community is struggling. We urge the school board to adopt a budget that invests every single penny directly into our students now and in the future. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Williams. I now call on Lenny to, Lenny Wolf, and then followed by Kimberly Adams.
Hello. I'm a Fairfax County taxpayer. First, thank you to the Board members for persevering in your service to our county through these unique and challenging times. Thank you for holding this public hearing on the school budget. I am very concerned about the school system increasing its recurring spending next year by $70 million in light of the economic damage the virus has already done and the ongoing economic uncertainty for the next few years. Being retired, my personal ability to pay county, state, and federal taxes has declined significantly due to reduction in investment income. Many of my fellow citizens have lost their jobs and are without a paycheck. I believe it is not prudent for the school system to plan to increase spending based on some assumed increases in revenue that may not have the actual backing of taxpayers at the county, state, and federal level. How can people pay taxes when they're not even being allowed to work? I recognize the school system is projecting to have increased enrollment along with demographic changes that I recognize the school system is projecting to have increased enrollment along with demographic changes that bring children with higher needs. To make room for this without increasing total spending, I suggest removing some of the spending for things like, number one, cultural responsiveness, anti-bias, anti-racism training. These create divisions within our citizenship. Number two, gold-plated special education programs which attract people into our county. Our current taxpayers cannot afford this. Three, social emotional supports. Please teach children how to take responsibility for themselves and how to work through obstacles in their life, not just look for support from others. I hear a lot of talk about food service and social emotional supports from the board, which makes it sound like our school system is in the social services business. Isn't there duplication because we already pay taxes to the county to provide social services for residents? Why do we also have to provide it from the school system? I also hear about the need for more staff and dropout support. Please stop trying to be all things to all people. Taxpayers can't afford it. If a student won't do the work or can't do it, having the school system try to force them may not be helpful to anyone. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. I now have Ms. Kimberly Adams. Welcome, Kimberly.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, and I can see you.
Good evening, Ms. McLachlan, Budget Chair, Vice Chair Anderson, Board Members, and Superintendent Brabrand. My name is Kimberly Adams, and I am speaking on behalf of the Fairfax Education Association, the NEA local in our public schools. We understand the harsh reality of the economic picture created by this COVID-19 crisis, a budget picture that is not at all what we had anticipated over just over two months ago. Your employees, our members, have risen to the occasion again and again over the past two months as we have fed our students and families in need, put ourselves at risk to distribute laptops and MiFi's and staffed the buildings so colleagues could pick up what they needed from their classrooms. We have completely redesigned our methods of instruction, worked through board issues, and maintained contact with students and families alike. In short, your FCPS employees have gone far and beyond anything written in their job descriptions to meet the needs of our community. All of this has been happening alongside employees managing their own families' fears and emotions during this pandemic. We stand together with other employee groups as we ask that this board continue to place retaining employee positions and providing compensation increases at the very top of a priority list. As revenue streams return, we have asked the County Board of Supervisors to allow budget guidance that will highlight people as its priority and shift funding where appropriate, even after the budget has been solidified. As additional monies are transferred, we ask that you begin by applying funds to people first and then continue forward with programs. Our public schools must remain world-class, and we will continue to ask that you invest in employees. We know that today it is difficult to find revenues with so many tens of thousands filing for unemployment in our county, so many businesses struggling to remain afloat under the stay-at-home orders, and your own school employees struggling to support their families as spouses face layoffs and reduced hours. We understand the superintendent mirroring the county's recommendation to delay increases in compensation due to the current budget situation. But we do however expect that as the revenue sources return, the compensation will be allocated in real time throughout the FY21 budget year. Quarter by quarter, we expect the board will mirror the Board of Supervisors to look at data and adjust its decisions in a timely manner. We are hopeful that this picture will improve as we exit this crisis. We thank you for your attention to this uncertainty at yesterday's work session on return to school. We expect your full attention to the uncertain timelines. We hope that you look at our survey results that are now posted to board docs. We very much understand the challenges posed by this pandemic and are looking closely at changes to policies and procedures from this crisis. Our students deserve the best that our educators can give, and we will continue to graduate 21st century graduates. We will do our part, but we need this board to find ways to mitigate the financial impact of this pandemic so it is not still strongly felt 10 years later, as happened in the last recession. We are asking that a plan be developed with employee input that will address this need. We hope you stay healthy and safe, and we look forward to continuing to work with you in the days and months ahead. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Ms. Adams, and thank you for your service. I would now like to call on Lisa Demille, followed by Nancy Trainer, and then Arthur Purvis.
Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Demo. I am a teacher at Bellevue Elementary School. I teach physical education, and I'm a member of the FCFT. I've worked and lived in Fairfax County since 1998. Currently, we are teaching, learning, and working in unprecedented times. This current educational atmosphere has shown a huge spotlight on the educational divide that we especially feel here on the Route 1 corridor. No one feels this more than our students with socioeconomic challenges, students with special needs, and families that English is their second language. These factors make learning online extremely difficult. Resources should be increased to help eliminate the digital divide for students and staff who do not have access to technology to ensure the future success of distance learning endeavors. The school board needs to prepare for the return of our staff and students to the classroom in the fall by increasing our support staff positions such as guidance counselors, school psychologists, and social workers. Many of our students during this pandemic have suffered tragedies and possible abuse during the required period of self-isolation, and they will need counseling. Our current counselor-to-student ratio was considered high before the pandemic. Staff is going to be called upon to help reduce the anxiety of our returning students. I urge the Board of Education to increase the Fairfax County Support Staff for counselors, school psychologists, and so social workers by utilizing our reserve funds and aggressively seek federal COVID aid to beef up and improve the educational system by increasing these staffing needs. It is the utmost importance that all current staff be retained regardless of classification, guaranteed full pay and benefits for the 2020-21 academic year. It's critical that all funds be directed appropriately during this uncertain time. Teachers and staff shouldn't be asked to pay for this pandemic by the proposal of eliminating our COLAs and our annual step increases. Now more than ever, we should be helping these essential workers by paying them what they were contracted for in the 2020-21 budget. This is not the time to hire new central office personnel or increase the pay of administrators. The limited resources we have need to be used to fund school-based positions so that we can attract and retain skilled employees in the long term. Many of our finest teachers leave Fairfax County to seek employee in surrounding jurisdictions. Finally, it should be extremely clear that educators deserve to earn a competitive family sustaining wage that covers the cost of food, childcare, healthcare, housing, transportation, and other necessities that they live in the community that they serve. I urge you, members of the school board, to invest in our community and its efforts. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Ms. Demille. I have Nancy Trainer, followed by Arthur Purvis, and I do want to note Tina Williams, who is president of FCFT. We so appreciate your leadership as well. Please go ahead, Lisa, or Nancy, sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. My name is Nancy Trainer, and I'm co-chair of the Education Committee of the Fairfax County Federation of Citizens Associations. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the Federation's Education Committee. Some of you are not perhaps familiar with the Federation itself, or how unusual it is that I'm speaking this evening. The Federation is an 80-year-old umbrella organization for homeowner civic and community associations. We are proud to work alongside FCPS lobbying enrichment and traditionally are represented within FCPS's many committees and task forces. By this point in the budget cycle, we often don't feel the need to provide additional input, but these are not usual times. We are unusually concerned with FCPS's reaction to the coronavirus pandemic, particularly with what we believe is a misplaced emphasis on equity concerns at the cost of unifying our community by providing our children with an excellent education. Excellence is job number one at FCPS, implicit within your mission statement, to inspire and empower students to meet high academic standards, lead ethical lives, and be responsible and innovative global citizens. Now more than ever, our children need us to empower them in reaching for those high standards. Fairfax's strong support for its public schools is predicated on their excellence. Excellence will now require FCPS to engage in continuous innovation. Our students may return in some form to our school buildings, but they may encounter a hybrid of distance learning and in-person learning, and we may need to shift quickly as circumstances require. We accept that some students and some teachers will not adapt easily, and we share the concern that this risks exacerbating particular imbalances. However, our bigger risk is paralysis. We risk failing to meet this moment quickly and boldly. We believe that FCPS's large size and diverse student body are assets, not obstacles to the kind of nimble experimentation the moment requires. But to unleash pedagogical innovation, FCPS must loosen its focus on equivalence among regions and among schools. As Emerson said, consistency is the hobgoblin of little minds. Now is the time for all of us to stand together as FCPS. Yet if we are to support every child by name and by need, then we cannot treat all children the same. We commend Superintendent Brabbrand for his strong collaboration with County Executive Brian Hill, which facilitated a budget that properly sets the same priorities in our schools that our county has set for its lines of business. We believe that the adjustments proposed in this budget are appropriate and prudent, particularly as they preserve school-based positions and maintain existing programs. We also commend FCPS for pivoting quickly to provide our families with hundreds of thousands of meals since school closed on March 13th. Finally, we look forward to hearing updates from you on what educational practices are working best in our new learning environment. Thank you so much for your time this evening and for all the time you spend on various school matters. We look forward to working together to help support our schools.
Thank you very much, Ms. Trainer, and thank you for your service on the Federation. I now turn to Arthur Purvis, and then we will have Azrez Rotem, followed by Katie Moreffi. Mr. Purvis, you're up.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, my name is Arthur Purvis. I address you as president of the Fairfax County Taxpayers Alliance. Today, the supervisors voted to raise real estate taxes. They did not lower last year's tax rate of $1.15 to offset this year's increase in assessments. The supervisors are also giving full pay to county employees that are not working during the lockdown. Private sector taxpayers that are losing jobs and pay now face a tax hike. Is it fair to give those school employees who are not working full pay while taxpayers are losing pay and paying higher taxes? The Sun Gazette recently quoted the school board chairman as saying, quote, "We understand how important a thriving and successful school system supports more than just student learning. Our schools are a hub of social activity, a place to make connections, and a place to have a sense of belonging," end quote. In response to this quote, an email observed that half a century ago churches were the hub of social activity, a place to make connections, and a place to have a sense of belonging, and we found our true belonging in our homes and families. Schools were for learning the three hours. How things have changed. The chairman's comment echoes John Dewey, who felt that learning, reading, arithmetic, and history were secondary. Dewey's introduction of whole word reading instruction, replacing history with social studies, and rejection of math drill explained the low FCPS test scores and the minority student achievement gap. The school's FY2021, 213-page, $3 billion proposed budget devotes less than a page to student achievement. The FCPS average SAT score is at the 76 percentile. While higher than other districts, this is not excellent. The average SAT score at the University of Virginia freshman class is at the 95th percentile. That is excellent. You cannot replace family. No success can compensate for failure in the home. Many of your graduates are so poorly educated that they will not be able to marry and support a family. Rather than trying to replace families, fix your curriculum so your graduates are economically marriageable and can create and support their own families. Likewise, schools with their Supreme Court mandated atheism cannot replace churches. You're trying to teach the Second Commandment to love your neighbor while skipping the First Commandment. As John Quincy Adams stated, "The laws of man may bind them in chains or put them to death, but they may never make them wise, virtuous, or happy." Likewise, secular curricula cannot make your students wise, virtuous, or happy. Public schools need to share the financial burden felt by private workers that are losing pay while paying higher taxes. Please spend our $3.1 billion on learning instead of a futile attempt to replace family and church. To get value for our taxes, please return the curriculum to the pre-John Dewey teaching methods that worked for 100 years and abandon the current methods which produce inequality, poverty, and inequality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Purvis. I now call on Azrez Rotem, Katie Moreffi, and then Camille Burden.
Hi, sorry. Hi, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Purvis. That was enlightening. My name is Azrez Rotem, and I'm a parent of three school-aged children here in Fairfax County, and I'm also a math teacher at Glasgow Middle School. In Fairfax County, we have one of the best school systems in the country because of our incredible teachers. Our school system, Mr. Purvis, has made Fairfax County a most desirable place to live, and as a result, real estate values have gone up, and so have all other consumer goods and services. However, what I notice is that teachers themselves, as a result of their great work and in turning Fairfax into one of the best places to live, can't afford to live here anymore. In order to survive, most of these teachers live far from where they work, which is really a burden, and they also need to take on second jobs, whether it's in the food service business, driving Ubers, or tutoring. Mostly, they rely on these second jobs to build up cash reserves for emergencies, of which they have very little, which is very unfortunate. Most teachers sadly live paycheck to paycheck. We must provide them with a living wage. If we don't take care of our incredible teachers, and believe me, I'm a career switcher, and I can attest to the fact that they are incredible, Mr. Purvis, we'll start losing them to places like Gladden where living is cheaper and wages are higher. And that's why we need to do the following. We need to not eliminate cost of living increases, not eliminate step increases and other expected weight increases which hurt employee retention and hurts morale. It's inexcusable to require our public workers in Virginia to put their lives on the line and work overtime to serve our communities and then turn around and deny these very workers their much deserved cost of living adjustment. And I'm not ignoring our current COVID-19 situation, but we have to stop living off the back of teachers. Anytime there's a headwind, we're happy to cut and slash their benefits and their pay. We have to stop doing that. Let's not make Fairfax County second-rate. Let's take care of our teachers by paying them. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rodham. I now have Katie Moreffi. Are you with us, Katie?
Yes, I am.
Wonderful, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Katie Moreffi, and I've been a school counselor for 10 years in Fairfax and a member of FCFT. Recently, I've heard many of my students express their feelings about school closure and COVID-19 by telling me their feelings, how they feel scared, confused, lonely, socially isolated, disconnected, sad, and stressed. Schools are a haven and a safe space for many kids, especially kids that have had traumatic events such as emotional physical abuse, divorced or separated parents, experienced death to a loved one, witnessed or have been a victim of domestic violence. Unfortunately, some of our students have given up on their distance learning education structures due to mass confusion in the midst of technology barriers. The unfeathering of mental health supports provided in our schools have impacted our students significantly. I spoke with one student that used flash pass frequently after a failed suicide attempt and returning from Dominion Hospital about two months prior to school closure. Currently, the signs of severe depression are constant, even with having medication as a treatment. The student refuses to speak to a therapist via telehealth and insists therapy is not needed. In partnership with that parent, the student agreed to do weekly check-ins with me on the phone with the caveat that if indication of suicidal ideation or harm to others was expressed, confidentiality would be broken. This is just one example of the social emotional stories and how crisis really demands counselors. In the process of making social emotional needs a priority, I urge the portion of the COVID-19 Response Funds and the Federal Cares Act funding of the $20 million that FCPS is receiving to go towards reducing school counselor ratios and to grant $2 million in hiring new counselors. As we know, counselors are not just a support to students, but a staff as well. In a recent survey of 825 FCPS participants, 91 responded that personal level stress has increased since the start of COVID-19. since the start of distance learning compared with the stress level experienced before the school closure. This crisis demands counselors, as we know, our students can feel and hear the stress of the educators. In our survey, we also received nine, we also saw that 91 respondents believed that FCPS current staffing and support for mental health will fall short of meeting the mental health needs of the students and staff throughout the closure and after school resumes in person. So again, I urge you guys to fund school counselors as this crisis demands more mental health supports, and please consider the data points that are in your budget.
Great, thank you very much, Ms. Moreffi. I now call on Camille Burden, followed by Lindsay Galiso.
Hello, hi.
Hello, Camille. Please proceed.
Okay. Good evening, Ms. McGlocken, board members, and Dr. Braibran. My name is Camille Burden. I am an ESOL teacher and ESOL department chair at Holmes Middle School. This is my fourth year teaching in Fairfax County and the 19th year of my teaching career. I've also taught in a rural border town in New Arizona, Detroit Public Schools, and DC Public Schools. Four years ago, when I interviewed for positions at Fairfax County Public Schools, there were ultimately two schools that vied for me. During that period, the Virginia Department of Education was reviewing my Michigan teacher certification and education coursework. Both schools waited for me. Eventually, everything worked out. I chose one school, and I haven't looked back. From onboarding with HR to my first week at my school, I've had a strong sense that Fairfax County Public Schools is where I am supposed to be. I felt strongly that I can grow professionally in Fairfax County. I also know without a doubt that my contribution is valued and appreciated here. No other district have I worked for is as professional as Fairfax County, nor other district have I worked for with values, experience, and teacher credentials as much as Fairfax County does. In Fairfax County, I have found my home. This sentiment has resounded with me from my first week until each year that I have been with the county. It wasn't until very recently, however, that for the first time, I began to question if Fairfax County Public Schools is the place for me. This was the first and only time that I began to search for open positions in neighboring counties. One reason why I now question whether FCPS is the right place for me is because of the proposed budget that takes away teacher step increase while giving more money to school principals and to central office positions. During this unique time of social distancing that we find ourselves in, we are tasked with navigating distance learning while simultaneously managing our individual and familial, mental, and emotional health. As a classroom teacher, my commitment to my students has not wavered or faltered, and I don't know a teacher that wouldn't say the same. In fact, what I do know is that every teacher I have spoken to has recounted that they are doing even more work daily with distance learning than in-person classes. We are calling parents more than ever. We are emailing students and parents. We are recrafting lessons and assignments to fit distance learning parameters. We are making videos. And the message that this proposed budget tells us is our work is not valued, and we don't matter like I initially believed that we did. What this crisis has so decidedly revealed is that instructional staff are essential workers, and we are the most vital, inextricable link to our students' education. I urge you to recognize that at this time, it is delinquent to give principals a raise or hire central office positions at the expense of instructional staff who directly serve children.
Thank you very much, Camille. Appreciate you coming out and speaking with us. I now have Lindsay Galiso, followed by Joe Barbie, and then Gina North.
Hello. Hi, how are you? Thank you. Okay. Hi, my name is Lindsay Galizio. I'm a licensed special educator and a school-based technology specialist at South County Middle School. I've been in the county 20 years. An ESBIT's main goal is to directly support and coach teachers into successfully implementing instructional technology initiatives at their school and to use this technology effectively to support, to directly support student learning. In order to do this, it is crucial that we are available as a resource for our teachers as well as our leadership team every day. During this health crisis, this need has become even more apparent. Not all schools at this time have a full-time ESBIT. We are asking that FCPS once again funds a full-time ESBIT in every elementary school. As we continue to discuss equity across all schools, the COVID-19 health crisis has again brought to light the inequities of student technology resources. As we move forward, it is essential that all elementary and middle school students are given access to a laptop to have at home to access distance learning materials, as well as a Mi-Fi internet device if needed. Some schools do not have laptops also to give to IAs to work from home to support students during distance learning. If students and staff do not have access, how can we say teaching and learning are occurring? On the topic of distance learning, what is our plan as we move forward? Speaking as an ESBIT and coming from a school, it has been a rough road so far. Moving forward, it is essential to involve ESBITs as stakeholders in the planning groups for future distance learning efforts and in professional development planning for next year, which would bring a school-based lens to the process as well as feedback from how things have been going these past few months. Finally, as we plan for future distance learning opportunities, there needs to be an improved communication plan between FCPS central office departments and the schools as we plan future professional development opportunities for teachers. The current, currently, some communication is sent to us. Some is sent to T-Specs, some is sent to principals, and then some communication gets mixed up in the process. Unfortunately, this approach is not working for schools, teachers, or students, and needs to be improved upon. As we move forward through this health crisis, I want to thank the board and FCPS administration for their recognition of the hard work of all ESBITs that have put in to support the implementation of FCPS distance learning program. Again, our job is to support the implementation of instructional technology, and we really appreciate everything that you've done to support us so we can support teachers and students. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay, and we do appreciate the incredible hard work that you and the ESBITs have done as we rolled out distance learning.
Thank you.
I call on Joe Barbie, followed by Gina North, and then Kathy Sells. Are you with us, Mr. Barbie?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
We can. Please proceed.
Good evening. I'm an instructional assistant at Quanda Road School in Alexandria and a member of FCFT. I've lived in Northern Virginia my entire life and have worked here in Fairfax County for five years. As an IA, I work directly with our students, running from class to class with them, supporting them academically and emotionally. I'm grateful to have such an inspiring and challenging career. But working for one of the largest school districts in the country should not have to come with the challenges of living because in addition to my career within the county, I also have to work many part-time jobs just to make ends meet. We as employees should not have to worry about having multiple jobs in the best of times, and especially not in a pandemic. A work-life balance is necessary to maintain some semblance of sanity, and that is an unattainable goal when we log 40 hours a week at school, not counting our hours working late or from home. This proposed budget does nothing to support the hard-working rank-and-file educators within our county, but rather, it increases the gap between them and everyone else. We are told all the time to eat well, sleep enough, exercise, wash our hands, and stay six feet apart, but we forget to address the elephant in the room: mental health. Mental health is a basic need for everyone, be it because of addiction, stress from everyday life, chemical imbalance, or trauma. And right now, we are all living through trauma every day. The pandemic has shown the cracks in society that need addressing, and those cracks include how we support our most vulnerable. We as a county can do better, and we should. We should be focused on funding our schools, our students, and keeping our staff whole because what is a school district of administrators with no teachers or IAs? I'm here to urge the school board to adopt a budget that invests in our most vulnerable students, increases mental health support by hiring additional school counselors, bridges the digital divide for students and staff, and keeps employees whole, but also a budget that supports our teachers, IAs, and support staff. Before this pandemic, we already lacked enough staffing in special education and in mental health support, including but not limited to school counselors, psychologists, and social workers to meet the needs of our students. To rebound from this pandemic, we need to increase these supports and invest in school-based positions that will directly serve our students so that our students' needs are met and they don't fall further behind. Because when our students come back to school, they will not only be behind academically, they, like everyone else, will have suffered through months of self-isolation and trauma. And it is our duty to our students and our community to help mitigate that however we can. I know our budget is tight, and that is why every cent counts. So I'm here to urge, urge, urge you to reallocate the money proposed to increase raises for elementary school principals and hire additional principals and central office staff, and instead, invest this money in school-based positions that will directly serve our kids. It is critical that we retain our staff and fund our schools. We are already understaffed, and this proposed budget will do nothing to address the issue. We need to support our students from the bottom up, not the top down. I urge the board to fund our schools, directly invest in our kids and educators. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Barbie. I now call on Gina North, followed by Kathy Sells, and then Norm Hall. Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay. Good evening, school board members and Dr. Braibran. I would first like to thank you all for your support of teachers over the past several weeks. This has been a trying time for all of us, and it is nice to know someone has our backs. I am here to recommend changes to the upcoming 2020-2021 budget to better support special education in Fairfax County. I have never understood why, when FCPS schools have very public problems with special education, that adding additional staff at the school level is never the solution. More positions at central office and additional training seem to be the go-to solutions. However, central office does little to help staff at the school level, and no amount of training is going to work if we have caseloads that are too large for us to manage. The staffing formula that makes no sense in practice remains in place and must change. The current budget has allocated $1.1 million for a reorganization of the Office of Special Services to include seven additional positions in central office. I am here to ask you to move those funds to positions at the school level. Central office does little to help teachers in the trenches working with our most vulnerable students. While I agree that a reorganization of this department is necessary, now is not the time. Our special education students are going to be further behind because of school closures, especially our CAT-B students who are struggling with a distance learning format. We do not currently have access to our research-based programs, which will cause our students to come back to school with a larger gap than your typical summer brain drain. Additionally, because of the timeline extensions, we are all going to have a local screening backlog that must be addressed as soon as schools reopen. Because local screening chairs are also full-time special education teachers in the elementary school, this puts additional stress and strain on the individuals who hold this position. I ask you to please use the funding earmarked for central office to provide more positions at the school level for special education. Give more local screening positions at the elementary school level. Finally, the staffing formula must be addressed now. Asking elementary school special education teachers to carry caseloads of 22 students is not reasonable. Treating a student who requires 20 minutes of services three days a week, the same as a student who requires nearly three hours of services every day, is not reasonable. What special education teachers are being expected to do is not reasonable. Please consider reallocating these funds to help those of us who are actually spending our days with these students. They need and deserve better. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Ms. North. I would like to call on Kathy Sells, followed by Norm Hall, followed by Shannon Aguilar. Are you with us, Ms. Sells?
Yes, I am. The microphone hadn't caught up yet. Video is also should be on.
Yes, you're all set to go.
Okay. Hi, I'm Kathy Sells. I've lived here since 1990. My children have gone to school here. I'm an elementary special education IA for 15 years. My comments will cover what is the most important things to me to help our families through these times. It's not central office being staffed up. Kids first, our kids first, our families first. That's FCPS's motto and mantra. Yet here we are asking for monies to support those very same. Prior to COVID-19, the ratio of school count to students had already been slated to be increased to be more in line with the 1-250 ratio that the National Councils Association and the Virginia Department of Education recommended. We already required more school-based counselors, school-based support people. The actual ratios are higher than they should be. Still, and so will increase. The need for additional available counselors was already a known entity. Our families and school-based personnel require additional support, additional counselors. Our kids acclimate to this new normal. We cannot leave it up to only the parents and the teachers for our students through these changes to everything they've known. The gap, some, many years. Oh, it's growing another, it's growing again, is another comment I've heard. We have the opportunity to take care of it right now at this moment in time before it gets wider. We can't let our families down when we can solve this. FCPS has to make sure that those families in need of technology, whether for distance learning or any type of learning, be able to do just that. FCPS is supposed to be what our kids and our families can rely on. Let's make that happen. We have emergency funds, and a fund should be utilized for now. I do not want to leave out support staff at schools, the teachers, and IAs. These funds should be used to increase our staff and have more IAs who can support the teachers. If not only, if not now, then when should we use those emergency funds? Often, the IAs are ears in many cases and can be much-needed support to teachers and counselors. That is all I have at this moment. Thank all of you for the time and many extra hours that you have put in.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sells. I do want to ask that all speakers, if you can, please be sure to email your remarks to our clerk of the board, Eileen Mulberg. You can find her email on our FCPS website under School Board. We do want to make sure the boards have your written remarks. I now call on Mr. Norm Hall, followed by Shannon Aguilar, and then Deborah Hicks-Johnston. Are you with us, Mr. Hall? I will proceed to the next speaker. Do we have Shannon Aguilar?
Yes, I'm here.
Wonderful, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Shannon Aguilar, and I work at Mount Vernon High School as an ESOL teacher. I've been teaching for eight years and am also an FCFT member. School closures in Fairfax County due to COVID-19 have created many sudden changes in the lives of students, parents, and teachers. Adjusting to these changes has been particularly challenging for our most vulnerable students and families, including those that have special education requirements, our English learners, as most of my students are, or those with technology challenges. Before this pandemic, I was already worried about the mental health of my teenage students. As if experiencing their teenage years and the academic and social pressures that accompany them isn't enough, many of my ESOL students are working long hours after school, helping to raise younger siblings or even their own children in some cases, while learning English and working twice as hard to make the same progress of their native-speaking peers. They have been forced to be isolated from the friends and teachers they depended on for stability, which will deeply affect their mental well-being long past the school closure. When the new school year starts, they will need the professional support of counselors and other key student services staff to help them adjust to their new normal. I'm concerned that the budget does not include an addition of new school counselors or psychologists. My school currently has two counselors for our hundreds of ESOL students, which is already nowhere near enough to adequately serve them. I urge the school board to make hiring new school counselors and psychologists I urge the school board to make hiring new school counselors and psychologists a priority to directly support our students when they return to school. Before this pandemic, teachers were known for giving their all to students despite being underpaid. Many worked multiple jobs to make ends meet, and this is true more now than ever. During my earlier years as an FCPS teacher, I had to take an additional evening teaching job to support my family. It was completely exhausting and also put a strain on my husband and son when I wasn't at home. Luckily, the step increases I received over recent years have enabled me to quit my second job and focus more on my family. A lot of teachers are not yet that fortunate. Now, many of the supplemental jobs teachers hold have been cut due to the pandemic, which will cause an additional financial struggle for many staff members. This, combined with the inherent stress from teaching and living in the time of COVID-19, is overwhelming for many staff members. Without step increases and other pay raises that teachers usually get, many will not be able to pay for rent and other bills that will greatly suffer. Over the years, I have seen several talented teachers leave FCPS to receive higher compensation in other counties. Now more than ever, employees need to see their dedication is valued by the county's top decision-makers. Please work diligently to reinstate the expected MSA and step increases as quickly as possible to ensure that all staff members will have enough pay to take care of their families, as well as their students. Thank you for your time and for all you do for our county.
Thank you so much, Ms. Aguilar. I now call on Deborah Hicks-Johnson. Oh, wait, I do see Mr. Norm Hall is here, Speaker number seventeen, so we will go with Mr. Hall, followed by Deborah Hicks-Johnson. Please proceed, Mr. Hall.
Good evening. Thank you, Ms. McGlaughlin. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I'm Norm Hall, speaking here as an individual tonight. I have had to monitor updates from a school system that is hard-pressed to be transparent when it comes to staff actions. Most significant was the release Friday of the structure and membership of the COVID-19 workgroups in place since March. Friday, May first, was news, when news came of $20 million in CARE Act funding. While our government and schools did everybody through our crisis moments, we must also make sure that our children are served in the spirit of One Fairfax, that every child's needs are met by name and need. Children who need special education services are the subjects of individual education plan meetings of school educators, specialists as needed, parents, students, and often extra people there to make sure complex needs will be recognized, discussed, and accommodated. Longer meetings are necessary for students with complex needs. These are children who did not benefit from planning before FCPS released versions of its distance learning plan for deployment during the pandemic school shutdown. Now, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act requires these students to receive free appropriate publication whenever general education students do, regardless of how well-prepared the school district was or is prepared. I didn't call for Fairfax schools to stop the DLPs when it was obvious that, under any other circumstances, this work would be seen as federal violations of student rights, and was quiet while BDOE showed that they were going to let schools proceed as best they can, because the protest at this point would have been to deny educational benefits without helping others. But while I presume some behind-the-scenes coordinated efforts centered on special education and DSS staff, combined with leader teams, leadership team support, this is not what happened. DSS personnel were on other task forces, no doubt providing valuable input for the benefit of general education students. However, no reciprocal teams were tasked to manage the risk of expanding achievement gaps of students with disabilities. It is catch-up time to mobilize the resources available and committed to meeting the full needs of students with disabilities. Dr. Braybrand recognized the need for better communication when he met with SEPTA, but gaining confidence and trust with this community means more than communication. It means planning, and to be clear, this is not an underlying blank plate. We have the restraint and resolution work pending the lawsuit against FCPS, an advanced academic report which had neglected two E students, a need for discipline study focusing on students with disabilities getting disproportionately negative outcomes. But here's some good news. A pending independent auditor-led study of special education programs. Let's make sure that this gets off to a good start in spite of the chaos that happens when schools can be opened as usual. Any FCPS budget plan for 2021 needs to put any students who were left behind when school closed in March at the top of the list for consideration when they reopen, because that is the fair thing to do. I hope that the Fairfax County School Board will adopt this priority as policy, and that the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors funds it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hall. I now call on Deborah Hicks-Johnson, followed by Maria Cheyil.
Thank you so much, and good evening. I want to thank the board for this opportunity to speak before you. I am a teacher, a chartered teacher at South County High School, and I teach senior students, government, freshman students, world history. I work to help with tickets at football games, extracurricular activity, including concerts, and I manage almost 2,000 students through the halls and our cafeteria. I want to talk to you today about equality and individual dignity. I'm a government teacher, and we talk about democracy all the time. And when I talk about democracy, and this stays on my board all year, we talk about tenants like majority rule, compromise, freedom, equality, and in, in the, individual dignity and worth. When it comes to equality, I want to urge the board to fund our schools. I want to fund our schools and to include equal access. Equal access will provide equal opportunities for all, not just the students, but for teachers as well, and those that work with students. The digital divide is real, and a lot of students don't have the proper equipment, nor do they have the proper access to education. And so, just today, I had six students that dropped their Wi-Fi. I don't know what that, what happened with the, in the middle of my lesson, but they missed that part. I had six freshmen who were absent, and I have to tell you, the other part of it is, we have to be valued. When we talk about mental health, that's real. When we talk about mental health, we talk about stress, and stress causes illnesses. I once, you know, had a student by the name of Jamie. He was an ESOL student. And he said to me, and I asked him, Jamie, you don't sit on a table. And he said, oh, well, missy, you tell me. If I learn it, then I know. And so, I want to talk to you about clarity. I want, I want you to understand that as individuals, we all deserve, everybody is valued, is the students, the faculty, and those that work directly with students. When we talk about individual dignity and worth, we talk about the fact that we did not get clear instructions from the very beginning. We need a well-thought-out decision with teacher input. Now, I have to tell you, I don't know where I would be without my school-based technology support and my librarians, who, who directly work with students, and they directly work with the faculty. The stu, the teachers weren't given the proper professional development, while of course, we do know that some other districts did have opportunities for that. What I want, what I want to remind you of is that, please fund our schools and make sure that we keep health and safety first. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hicks-Johnson. I appreciate you noting all the extra work that our teachers do behind the scenes beyond teaching in the classroom. I now call on our final two speakers. I have Maria Cheyil and Larry Little. And I apologize, Maria, if I've mispronounced it. Are you with us, Maria? Okay, do we have Larry Little?
I'm here.
Welcome, Larry. Please proceed.
Thank you. I'm sorry for that sun streak across my face. Good evening. I'm an FCPS teacher and a member of FCFT. I think there are three populations of students in our schools who are the most in need of specialized support: sped students, ESOL students, and those with other mental, social, and emotional challenges that interfere with learning and often lie behind classroom misbehavior and disruption. In this time of crisis, when our entire education system has been severely tested and our daily routines completely changed, these are the students most affected by this upheaval and the hardest to serve. Throughout the county, FCPS educators are really struggling to connect with and get work back from these students. This is perhaps our biggest challenge with distance learning. As such, these are the students we must target for additional support as we move forward. In addition to the hurdles they face as members of one or more of these groups, many also face COVID-19-related traumas and challenges, such as family illness and dislocation, job loss, food insecurity, et cetera. In a year when our budget will be very lean due to the COVID crisis, we must focus on adding school-based staff who will directly serve these students: counselors, psychologists, social workers, and veteran sped teachers who can be local screening chairs. In addition, the number-one problem that gen ed teachers face in maintaining healthy classrooms and delivering quality instruction is misbehavior. I'm just a PE teacher, so I don't have the challenge of getting through a year-long academic curriculum, but misbehavior was always my biggest problem, even in PE. Some kids just seem to want to disrupt everything. Having thirty or more students in a class isn't as big a problem as having chronic misbehavior that interferes with everyone's education. Not too long ago, I spoke to the board on the issue of school discipline. My point then was that the current cycle of misbehavior, short stay in the office, and return to the classroom isn't working to change behavior. There needs to be another step or two while students are out of the classroom to help them return to class successfully and productively. Changing behavior should always be the goal. The agents of that change are the school counselors, psychologists, and social workers. We need more of them, and they need to be prepared to take on those challenging behaviors that won't change on their own. Every school should be fully staffed to support the mental, social, and emotional health and development of its students. Currently, the budget proposal calls for $800,000 to raise elementary principals' pay and add two new executive principals, and $1.1 million to reorganize OSS and add seven new central office sped positions. I'm sure these are important steps forward, but I don't think the time is right to spend scarce budget dollars this way this year. Due to huge unexpected state and local COVID-related costs, teachers are being asked to accept yet another freeze of their salaries and MSA this year, the fifth freeze of one or the other in eleven years, by my count. Yet, until tonight, I haven't heard one word of protest about this freeze from a single teacher, because we recognize that we are in a crisis situation. But it is unreasonable and unfair to freeze teachers' pay while raising principals' pay and adding executive principals and central office staff. Instead, we should add frontline school-based staff who will directly serve our students. Please prioritize that for this year. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Little. Do we have Maria Cheyil? Have you joined us? Okay, at this point, it appears that all of the speakers who signed up to join us have been able to give us their remarks. So I want to thank everyone for virtually attending this evening's budget public hearing and for sharing your comments and your concerns. The fiscal year 2021 advertised budget will be discussed at a school board work session this coming Thursday on May fourteenth. The board will then take final action on the budget the following Thursday on May twenty-first. Both meetings will be livestreamed at fcps.edu/tv/ch99. Again, we want to thank you for your comments. We hope that, for those of you who did speak, please do email your remarks to our clerk of the board and wish you all a very good evening. Stay safe.